Good evening. The time is now 6:00 p.m. I'd like to call this Board of Select meeting to order for February 27th and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And a roll call.
Art Gaggen.
Kevin Cunningham. Item C, to approve the meeting minutes of Board of Select dated February 13th, 2023.
Make a motion. Make a motion to slow meeting minutes to 13:23. Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item D, public comment. Hearing none. There is no old business, and we go right into new business. Before we jump right into that, though, I would ask that you add item four to discuss an act on approval of town annual operating budget and capital budget.
Could you repeat that again?
Discuss an act on approval of the town annual operating budget and capital budget.
Make a motion to add item four.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, so item one is to discuss an act on approval of purchasing a water tank for the highway department. In item one, you will see my new business. That'd be, I wish we had pictures to justify what was going on, but it was a SIP, and so they couldn't do any water hose out, spray outs, anything like that, because it was bad. So I asked them to just go out and get some quotes for the water tank itself, just so you can note in here, whichever one you choose, it's fine. It's just that the tax that we listed there is not going to be something that comes from the town, because we are a non-exempt. So whatever the value is, like the first one says $4,692.34, and the second one would be $4,853.98.
And kind of mount on it.
It mounts like it does right now on the back of a truck, and when they go to do a road, they actually hose down the roadway first and then to be able to do any work on that.
Did they say which one's better, the skin mounted or the leg?
He prefers the plastic mark one in the front.
Skin?
Yeah.
Looking at the second quote, maybe the B-time on that.
Yeah, that's the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, that B-time is 35 weeks.
Do we know what this first one is?
That one is probably, oh, the 40. And unfortunately, there are no other places to get that type of material from, so those are at least the two quotes they had. So what would your pleasure be?
I'll make a motion to accept the bit of the plastic mark for $4,692.34. Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number two, discuss an act on approval of purchasing sweeper room for the highway department. There's three quotes there on that paper. East Coast Sign, Atlantic Room, and CN Wood. There's a slight difference in all the prices, but again, he would prefer to go with East Coast Signs. He tried getting as matching as best he could for pricing and the numbers that he needs. So he does have the money, the budget for both of these, so that's why trying to bring them out, we could go in the sweeping season. So what would your pleasure be?
Make a motion for East Coast Signs for $5,160. Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, discuss an act on the ARPA Small Business Economic Recovery Grant Program, the second round. This is the second round of that, and.
Jordan, if you would. All right, so since I last saw you, the town attorney approved the previous applications, said that they were good to go, and then also a template for grant contracts with the applicants. Now I'm working on putting those, putting each individual applicant's information into the county try, and I anticipate signing of those contracts within the next week or so. So this round, we're looking at three applications that were recommended by the Economic Development Commission. The first is Cloud Nine Shop LLC for $25,000. They want to do some roof repairs and interior redesigning. Distinctive Touch Salon, they want to update the two of their treatment rooms. And then Longos CT Inc., DBA Longos Pizza CT, which is just Longos Pizza, $25,000 for H-back upgrades. EDC did, they decided to hold up on awarding Bubbles Laundry Spa to allow for additional applicants. Bubbles is the same owner as Distinctive Touch. This was the big situation. This was the only two applicants that had the same owner. So they wanted to hold up, see if some of the other applicants submit the required information, and then go from there. Before you take a vote, just a couple other updates. So far, if everything's approved tonight, that'll be $321,100 that have been put into this program and awarded to businesses in town, which will leave a remaining balance of $28,900. The board can also consider reopening the applications. However, the EDC did not recommend that at this time, but it's the discretion of the board. I don't have a recommendation either way. I would say if you did decide to reopen, to make sure to give priority status to any current applicant who submitted by the January deadline, as long as they turn in all required information by March 13th. And that would be my own recommendation there. And as you'll see, I would recommend, if you do reopen it, to have, begin with accepting applications by March 13th, 2023. But that's entirely up to the board.
What would you recommend then as a closing date?
As a closing date? I would keep it ongoing until as long as funding is available, particularly as we move forward, some of these projects might end up coming in under budget. So if that happens, we may have an additional thousand here and there. Rather than having to keep opening and closing it, it would just probably, it would expedite the process.
Understood. I think that giving it a start date, an open date, does tell people that, you know, this is what you have to do and start working for it. You have currently $28,000, excuse me, $28,900 as your remaining balance. Like you said, there might be some other monies left over. So I think that, I think this is good. It's just about realizing its end to the program, but giving it a start date would allow them to start working their papers and getting it ready.
And I would say we have had particularly nonprofits reach out and say, they're disappointed they missed the deadline, and ask me to contact them if it is real. Yes, someone just reached out to me, too.
Yeah.
So obviously, they found out late. Yeah. And we're trying to get out there as best as possible between the org and the book. Yeah, the org bulletin, termite wire, Facebook. We have flyers all around Facebook, so.
Word of mouth.
Yeah, word of mouth was big. I knew it recommended that, just going and handing out flyers, but some businesses, everyone was impacted, so.
I know I did three or four that came forward to you, so.
Right.
I think it's a good program. I just want to continue it. I would recommend, if we're going to make a motion to include the reopen, reopen date of March 13th, until all funds are exhausted.
Can I ask a question about that? Because we have funds left over. Is there any chance to put more into the program soon?
Well, we had the ARPA monies up to a certain point. We did hold back a certain number, because in the case of emergency between now and the, I think it's the third quarter in 2024. So while we could.
Third quarter.
Yeah, I think we need to, you know, be wary of that, you know, date. But for right now, I think the 2089 is a good start.
And so the first vote would be to oblige the, to afford the three applications at the top there, so the two, or those three, if contingency is noted.
Yep.
And then after that, we can make a.
Secondary vote.
Right.
So really, the vote, the first one would be a motion to move that the following ARPA Small Business Economic Development, Economic Recovery Grant applicants, be approved, the contingency that the applications receive final approval by the town attorney, and all project activities follow municipal, state, and federal guidelines to Cloud Nine Shop LLC for $25,000, Distinctive Touch Salon for $25,000, Longos CT Inc., which does business as Longos Pizza, for $25,000.
I'll read that motion.
That's the first. That. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the second one would be to have a reopen date, reopening of March 13th for remainder of the monies at this point. I won't say the number of the remaining monies, because you could get some monies coming in, but reopen it for March 13th and really try to advertise and push that out there, I think it would work. And I would recommend the reopening of the application, the reopening date of March 13th for the ARPA Small Business Economic Recovery Grant applications.
Make a motion to reopen the applications, starting March 13th, 2023.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Well, I think we just did that in the first motion, but.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yep. All in favor for the second motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number four says, discuss an act on approval of the town annual operating and capital budget. Just today, we finalized the book, just today. And there's a reason for that, and I do want to talk about the way the charter is written about that. So it says the, one of the obligations and duties of the First Selectment is on section six, page 11, and this particular section says, "The First Selectmen shall prepare and submit to the Board of Finance the annual operating budget and the capital budget for the town, excluding the operating budget for the Board of Education. The budgets shall be submitted to the Board of Selectmen at least two weeks prior to the presentation by the Board of Selectmen." Kind of confusing. But just so you know how the process went last week, he sat with the Board of Education, and I can't, honestly, if you were to look at first page, which you usually find the revenue lines coming in, and then what shows you would be anticipated mill rate based on what we have as a grant total, you can't make that really until you know what the budget is being proposed by the Board of Education. We didn't get that until last Thursday morning. So I scrambled to put this all together, finalize as best I could. I would ask that you consider reviewing all of this. We can approve it tonight. We always make changes in the future. I mean, that's really what you're going to have to do, is take a look at the books, what you like, don't like about it. I broke this down into the first section, which talks about the actual proposed budget, and then the department data, which when we sit down with all the departments, we go through their numbers comparative to last year, and give a little description about what happened. And then there's the backup data, so when we sit down and meet with them, there's all of that information about what they did, and how they arrived with their numbers. Then to just show you what happens on an annual basis, there is a section there called requests for funding. Everybody under the sun sends you a letter asking, can I get this, can I get that? Can't do all of it. The next section talks about purchase services, the things that we do, you know, put money in for. I think one of the highlights here, unfortunate highlights, is the letters that we've all received from the, what the district department helped. That was something that kind of shocked me, because you're looking at an increase of 53%. Every single town municipality had a discussion on that at the NICOG meeting when the Sustarki was there to explain why the increases. She just sent out a press release today talking about how she'd like to talk to each individual town, because she's heard the rumors that every town is looking to move out, to go to a different health district. And just so we understand the process for that, the Board of Directors for the Health District meets November, December timeframe and votes on their budget. The towns have until December 31st to stay with that health district or opt out and go somewhere else. This year, the letter came to us after. We got it January, mid-January, January 15th. Everybody got their letters and talked about the increase. So you can't opt in. So that's, that was an issue. So believe me, it's been a discussion between every single selectman or town manager from all of the towns, how there may be discussion about going to other areas for support. Can't do that until next year. So if I had to give the notice to, if we do decide to go somewhere else, we had to give the notice before December 31st that we're going to go to someplace else. We're talking about different ways to do that by way of collectively going together as a group somewhere else to see if we hit a group price. Some people may, it might be too far for them, so they might split off and go to other health districts, or at least discuss it with them. So that's where we are right now, and I thought that was an unfortunate highlight.
Any chance of other health districts, where you could?
It could be, absolutely. I already spoke to the Onkas Health District, the first thing I did. Next day, I got after the letter. I followed and asked them, what are the opportunities for Town Plainfield to go down to your district? They reached all the way from Norwood to Grisbon, so it's not a stretch to go with them. We did talk, yes, as what our numbers were, which I happen to have the numbers, by numbers, I mean, how many cases, how many different issues. We gave them a copy of that. So hypothetically, it won't actually be a decrease if we went along, but you're going to have other towns, municipalities looking to lock together to see if they get a reduced rate going somewhere else. But we'll see. I just wanted you to know that's what was, one of the other things that was the driving force. The final sections also talk about after purchase services. Then there's a section there for the five-year capital, and then finally, the new stuff that came up towards the end of the budget process, which was our phone system. Our phone system has lived its life, so to speak, while it works and functions now. If it ever crashes, it's just like, it's talking about Windows 7, there is no, there's no recovery. That is what it is. So not only does the town hall have it, animal control, highway, sewer, recreation, and also police. And that's why you're seeing in the Pledge of Allegiance, I tried breaking that down. WPCA will have that in there as well separately, and I put it for this year at least just for the police. They have almost as many phones as we have here. That's why I thought it would be fair for you to sound for them. But yeah, we're going to have to deal with that for the next five years for a contract. So when you get a chance to look through it, we can always come back, revisit, and go through and re-vote on certain items. But I do want to, you know, make mention the fact that the way the charter reads, it doesn't quite match up with what is here for, you know, giving this in totality to the Board of Finance, but at least we can give them the first program where they get their books. So Tom, after the meeting, if you want your book? Yep. I already had two people in here today looking for theirs, and I said, please wait until I at least addresses with the selectmen, so they can, you know, at least get it in hand. So all I'm asking is that you consider voting on the approval of the town annual operating budget and the five-year capital, and then we can go from there from the beginning forward.
Do you need a mouse?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to accept it. 23, 24, proposed budget.
And five-year capital?
And five-year capital.
As presented?
As presented.
Thank you. Hear the motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there is one out there, any other section? I have it, I just, we had someone who would come to us and ask us if he could get onto the Open Space Committee, and he is now resigned. So Caesar Rios has resigned. He's got a lot of work, travel issues, so we can't make it. We'll look to see if we can have someone else come on Open Space if need be, but I think it was done. And that was it for the other. So.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep. Art, motion to adjourn at 6:20?
Second.
Scott, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At 6:20, we will now start the Water Position Control Authority meeting for February 27th. Roll call.
Art Gaggen.
Scott Gardner. Kevin Cunningham, approve the WPCA minutes for January 23rd, 2023.
One correction on the adjournment.
Yep.
This should be Art motion to adjourn, and Scott seconded.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2023 with those corrections.
Okay. Scott seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment? Hearing none. Item E1, discuss and approve the purchase of manhole covers and materials to fix work done on Route 12 with bypass or procurement policy, as there was only one vendor. Last time we talked about this, it was, we were talking about it, and we did not include the fact that there was only one company that was, had materials, so it really should have been documented that we have to vote because of procurement policy to bypass that, because there's only one company. So that's why I would have to bring it back up, or.
It's the same company.
Same company, no, nothing's changed. So I would entertain a motion to bypass procurement policy, so that we can approve the purchase of manhole covers to fix the work done on Route 12.
So move.
Art, and you have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item F, adjourn. Motion?
So move.
Art?
Second.
Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, adjourned at 6:22. Good evening, everybody. If I could have you just have a seat. We'll get started right away. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. We'll try to make this as short as possible for you. Town of Plainfield is called a town meeting for February 27th, 2023, and I'm going to have the legal notice read by our town clerk.
The electors and citizens qualified to vote at town meetings in Town of Plainfield are hereby sworn to me on Monday, February 27th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. at the town hall, Plainfield Town Hall, 8 Community Avenue, Plainfield, Connecticut, for the following purpose. Item number one, to approve the authorization of the expenditure up to $100,000 from open space funds as a grant match as specified in Town Charter section 2-5D, dated at Plainfield, Connecticut, this 27th day of February 2023. Kevin N. Cunningham for selectmen, Arthur W. Gaggen selectmen, Scott Gardner selectmen. It was dated the 14th day of February. I wanted the notice.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would call for a motion for moderator.
My nominee, Kevin Cunningham, for moderator.
And that is?
Matt.
Matt, thank you.
I nominate Matt Raiden for moderator.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. And now you have a motion for Matt Raiden?
Yep.
Do you have a second for that?
I'll second.
Any others for nomination for moderator?
And will we close nominations?
Second.
Matt, who's the second? Kyle, second. For those who are going to vote, it is the closure of the nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. All in favor of Kevin Cunningham as the moderator, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Matt Raiden, as moderator, say aye.
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 Okay, so I will continue on as moderator. Thank you very much. So, we have read the legal notice. We are now going to be doing an introduction and a review of the documentation. There were some copies in the back desk, but what we are here for tonight, again, is to authorize expenditures up to $100,000 from open space funds as a grant match as specified by the Town Charter 25D. I will ask that if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone and turning to the audience so they can hear you clearly, this is Jordan Lumpkins. He's our grant writer, and he will follow through with what we have on the table for tonight.
Thank you everyone for coming out. So tonight, we're requesting that you approve the use of $100,000 of open space funds as a grant match. I'm currently working on an application for the Connecticut recreational trails brand, which is a program that will fund the design, planning, construction, and maintenance of trails in the state of Connecticut. Can you approve a match of up to $100,000? I can utilize that for a request of $500,000. If you saw the documents in the back, that's kind of a, an estimate that was created through the help of three different engineering firms. So ultimately, what I plan on applying for is a total project cost of $624,000. The grant request will be $495,000, and the total match will be $130,000. That is above the $100,000, because I'm utilizing other grants that we've already received towards that match. And this program's unique, where it will allow you to use expenditure to the application as the match. So we've already received a forestry management plan, so the funding that went towards that is being used. We've also been working with local nonprofit that's going to help with some of the environmental surveying and things like that. For those of you who don't know, the open space fund is used for the purchase or development within the purposes of open space, of land in town. So currently, there's $367,000 in the account. This is the same account we used back in August of 2021 to purchase the property that is going to be turned into trails. So the open space committee has been, advisory committee is very helpful in kind of directing where this project is going. It's looking like it will most likely be hiking, biking, horseback riding, not a lot of their structures, currently no structures. This would be put a parking lot in and the trails, and then. And yeah, so the $100,000, we need that in order to actually apply, and it'll be very helpful. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Can you state the address of this project?
Zero K Downey Road, just past the highway overpass, directly on the right there.
Where is it again?
Do you know where the skate-in is? Do you know where the skate-in is at Highway Campers?
Bowling alley.
The bowling alley?
No.
Okay. It's just on the south side of town. Do you know where Hanks is?
I know where Hanks is.
Okay, yeah, it's behind Hanks in that.
It's behind Hanks?
Yeah, it's 162 acres.
Does it butt up to 395?
It does about 395. Yeah. So 140 acres was deeded to the town by the Department of Transportation a couple decades ago. It was land locked until August 2021, when the town purchased 22 acres that gained street access.
Is the land from Highway Campers what up against it?
No, it butts the highway, separates it.
Oh, okay.
The other side of the highway, yeah.
Now, if these grants don't come in, this is a moot point. The money stays in the fund now, is correct?
Correct, yes. If that were to happen, we could come back and ask for.
Try for another one.
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, as you came in tonight, they were checking to make sure that you did receive a piece of paper. So you are a registered voter in the Town of Plainfield?
I make a motion that we approve the use of a hundred thousand dollars by a hand vote.
And by hand vote, I would like to have you put the three pieces of paper up there. We have a motion on the table for a hand vote. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of hand vote by paper, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. In that case, we'll go right to a hand vote. If you would, please. For the approval of authorization of an expenditure up to a hundred thousand dollars for open space funds as a grant match as specified in Town Charter, Section two-five D, please raise your hand or put paper.
Oh, should we just ask, say who against?
Okay, put your hands down. Anybody against? Please raise by signifying with the hand up. Against?
How many did you get?
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. We're just going to make sure we get a total number before we leave. Come register our voters after that.
I'm sorry?
Do you get your total numbers?
And there was one?
Two.
Two? I didn't get.
I think Paul was.
I voted for the moderator. I raised my big voice.
Uh-oh.
So first one counted, the second one I didn't hear.
So it was only one?
Just the one. All right, thank you. I have a clarification, thirty-three to one. The motion passes, and I do thank you again for coming out tonight. I move we adjourn, motion to adjourn, and. Kyle, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, thank you very much for coming out tonight.